I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Nash County Board of Education and the Nash County Commissioners to order.
And I'd like to call the recess meeting from October the second for the Nash County Board of Commissioners to order at this time.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Motion made by Board Member Edwards for the record. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Dunton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please be let known by the sign of aye. Motion carried. First item on the agenda is the updates. Dr. Stephen Ellis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So let me go over the, we've got some items, we've got some paper on your, in folders on your tables. You should have a PowerPoint presentation first. Then you're gonna have another document that's called the Plan of Transfer. And there will be a separate document. And I'm telling you this because we have it in Simley under two sections, so I want to make sure you'll have a copy. And then you're gonna have an inventory list which goes with the transfer plan. So you should have three documents that we're gonna discuss tonight. So good evening again. It is great to be here tonight because we get to highlight Nash County Public Schools. I just want to first thank you for your support, and when we have these highlights, it kind of puts in perspective, you know, where the funds, what's going on, what the updates are, and we had a real good year, so we want to make sure we share. We thank you. So on the agenda for tonight, it's gonna look like this. We had a welcome. Once again, thank you. We're gonna talk about new construction, which involves Red Oak Elementary. We also have some ongoing projects we're gonna discuss. We're gonna talk about school safety, academic services and accountability. Then we're gonna have an area of focus, and then we're gonna go into the plan of transfer. So Angie Miller is in Philadelphia, so I'm gonna do the maintenance part, the construction. And what I do want to highlight is, you can see up here in your packet, we have Spring Hope Elementary. It's got the second phase renovation, large in-house projects for a two-month completion. That, if you get a chance inside that building, it looks brand-new. The Edwards 600 Hall was the final phase of renovations. Carpet install in 14 Classroom is at Spring Hope, 3 at Bimvenue. You have Nashville Elementary, Winston Avenue, and Williford's Office. Renovation of NEDA, which is our Nash Everywhere Digital Academy, which is on the campus of Williford. Now has new paint, floor tile, added access controlled entrance, like our schools do with the badge. Completed items for the EVOL's Weapon Detection System. Mr. Ward will come up here shortly and talk about the new EVOL system we have in our middle and elementary schools. The movement of teacher supplies from Cedar Grove and Swift Creek Elementary to the Red Oak Elementary was done successfully. Southern Nash High School softball and tennis field house is complete. Designed and built counter-installed door at Bimvenue Elementary School. They have a new lobby that we'll discuss. I think I have a picture of that. Paved Winston Tar River Academy in Nash Central Middle. Install new cooler freezers at Edwards Middle. Nash Central High, final phase of the roof. And the freezer floor tile at Southern Nash High School. I've got some pictures we want to show. This is the new construction of Red Oak Elementary. You can tell that that is a beautiful campus, and I believe some of you came to see that, but that was a beautiful, that's a beautiful building. The Bimvenue Elementary, that is the new registrar booth that was put in for safety reasons. This is the project we are, I know there's a sign out there now, so I think some trees are gonna be cut down, the new Northern Nash Field House. We broke ground on that, I believe it was two weeks ago. This is what that construction will look like when it's completed. The closing of schools to maximize space, Swift Creek and Cedar Grove and green or vacant buildings right now. We have sold Braswell and the Rocky Mountain High School Baseball Stadium. And right now, I'm gonna get Mr. Ward to come up here and talk about school safety.
Good evening. As Dr. Ellis stated, I will be talking about school safety. As a part of some ongoing school safety measures that we've taken this year or the last two years, we have installed or have hired six middle school SROs, one per school. And we have eight elementary SROs. One SRO serves two schools in those elementary schools. We have four high schools each that has an SRO. However, we'll say that Rocky Mountain High School now has two SROs for Rocky Mountain High School. All other high schools do have one. There are two SROs assigned to Tar River, City, and Rocky Mountain Middle. That is because they're on the same campus, so those two SROs are right there, serving those three schools. The EVOL Weapon Systems, in which we installed this year in all of our middle and high schools. This is a picture of one of them at one of our middle schools. I think that is Nash Central Middle. This is what we call a single lane, the weapons detection system. And this is pretty much for those schools that are small, like our middle schools. However, our high schools have what we call dual lanes, because they have over 1,000 students to get more students in faster. I believe we can get over 500 students in, pass through in less than about 15 minutes. What funded these measures, the SROs and also the weapons detection system, through a funding stream of grants that were provided from the state Center for Safer Schools, and also state funds and monies that were donated, not donated, I'm sorry, monies that were allocated from what we call O-69, which are at-risk funds. This is a picture of the dual lane that's in all of the high schools. And again, the purpose of the dual lanes is to get more students through the process much faster and much easier without any interruption. Some of the measures that have been taking place over the last two years, the Center for Safer Schools, the grant does fund us for two years to cover the SROs and also the weapon systems, which are currently being paid for through the grant funds as well. So we've installed additional cameras in the schools. Access control doors, in which Dr. Ellis just alluded to earlier, in terms of you must use a badge to get in certain parts of our buildings. SROs, of course, in all of our schools now. Schools are required to conduct safety drills, of course fire drills. They must by law conduct those monthly. Lockdown drills, four per year, and tabletop activities or exercises with their staff, just going through different types of scenarios. They are required to do this at the beginning of the year. Say Something Reporting, that is an anonymous reporting system that our students use, and they're using it right now to report things that they may think that may be significant to us in terms of a student being in danger or anything that they think that may be harmful to a school, so students are reporting that anonymously. And I will say the principals are following up on that in a very timely manner. School safety plans, which are currently being finalized at this time, all schools are required to draft and submit a school safety plan through our Safety CERA, which is a platform for our safety plans and our, one of our, what is his name, Mr. Lewis with Emergency Management. He is currently reviewing those and giving our principals feedback on those plans, so they can submit and finalize those plans. We also have a district safety team in place. That district safety team is comprised of teachers, administrators, local EMS, and our central office members to make sure that we are hearing other people and that we are, make sure that we are getting feedback from the community as well and all of our stakeholders when it comes to school safety or district safety. Emergency red panic buttons that goes along with the lockdown drills. When they are having one of their lockdown drills, they must do one with law enforcement and use that red emergency button to make sure that button is working and active at all times, or at least at that particular time. The Rave App System, that's something that we're gonna launch this year. This is new. It is just another layer of support for safety. It is a mobile app that all staff members in the district will have access on their cell phones. Well, with a touch of a button, they can call 911 in case of an emergency. Or in the case of a non-emergency, they can just locate or notify those that are on staff. Say for instance, if Johnny's on the playground and Johnny falls down and has a bloody nose, well, the teacher or that's out there on the playground could just hit the app on her phone, and then it will contact whoever the administrator has designated to come out there, like for instance, a school nurse or administrators or someone else, or first responders to go to the playground to assist. Okay, that is my report for school safety. At this time, Melissa Nancy Smith will come forward with High Academic Expectations.
Good evening. Can't sleep about these things. Over the past three normal years, the district has moved its trajectory to improve student academic outcomes. We continue to work diligently to accelerate learning experiences for all of our students every day in every classroom. If you would bring your attention to the blue box. In 2018-19, we had four schools to exceed growth, 10 schools to meet growth, and 10 schools did not meet growth. In 1920, COVID hit, so we did not administer any end-of-year assessments. In 2021, we administered end-of-grade and end-of-course assessments. However, our status carried from the previous years, and we did not receive any growth data. So moving to 21-22, we had eight schools that exceeded growth, six schools that met growth, and 10 schools did not meet growth. Last year, during the 22-23 school year, we had 10 schools that exceeded growth, 10 schools to meet growth, and 10 schools did not meet growth. We had, I'm sorry, five schools did not meet growth. We had nine schools to improve its letter grades. And TRA moved from declining to maintaining. So how did we rank among other school districts across the state? In 21-22, we ranked 97 out of 115 school districts. In 22-23, we ranked 78 out of 115 school districts, moving up 19 places in our rankings. If this trajectory continues, we hope that next year this time, we will rank 59 out of 115. And we feel that with the evidence-based practices that we've put in place, the monitoring at the district level, if we continue with this momentum, we will be 59 out of 115 school districts. For the first time since 2014-15, Nash County Public Schools exited the low-performance status. We are relentless in improving classroom experiences for our students. And although we want to make sure that all students have academic experiences, we also recognize the importance of developing those soft skills, or as our state superintendent refers to them, as those durable skills. So it's important to us that as we engage with parents, teachers, students, and other stakeholders across Nash County and Edgecombe County, that we are supporting the portrait of North Carolina's graduate. It's important to Nash County Public Schools that when students graduate from our high schools, that they are adaptable, that they're good collaborators, that they can communicate well, that they have critical thinking skills, show empathy for others, have a learner's mindset, and that they assume personal responsibility. We recognize that with these skills, children can transcend into the workplace, armed forces, or to higher education. So how are we supporting these durable skills? CTE and work-based learning. Dr. Ellis gave us a charge to increase the number of work-based learning experiences that our high school students engage in. This year, we were projected to assign 75 to 100 students work-based development experiences. But for the fall of '23, we have already assigned 117 students. This summer, we collaborated with Nash Community College, and we formed the First Win Academy. We had 16 students to successfully complete the program, and five exited the program employed. Now I want to talk a little bit about our Spanish Emergent Program. We have Spanish Emergent Programs at Inglewood, Middlesex, and Winstead Avenue. This year, we introduce Spanish classes at Edwards Middle School as well as Southern Nash Middle School. We have roughly 254 students enrolled this fall. I do want to point out that when some of our students leave middle schools, they will have earned two high school credits in Spanish. College and Career Promise. Right now, we have roughly 891 courses that are being taken at Nash Community College. North Carolina STEM Schools of Distinction. We are in the process of applying and researching to have to add a grant to our district that will allow Nashville Elementary, Red Oak Elementary, and Red Oak Middle School to be North Carolina Schools of Distinction. Advanced Teaching Roles Through Opportunity Culture. Bailey, Coopers, Inglewood, Fairview, Middlesex, Red Oak Elementary, Williford, Winstead Avenue, Edwards and Parker are all part of opportunity culture. Opportunity culture is unique in that we pay teachers a stipend, and it puts excellent teachers in front of most of our students. The Village is a mentoring program for high school males. And as it stands right now, we are mentoring roughly 50 males across the district. And these students are being mentored by prominent males throughout our county, just helping our students to see positive individuals who could serve as role models for them. Next, I will ask Tremaine McQueen to come forward. Sorry, Dr. Ellis is next.
So at this time, we're gonna talk about the areas of focus that our group is concentrated on for this year. One is gonna be the increase in salary benefits. The technology demand will go into the demerger impact and teacher retention. And I believe the first slide is gonna be Mr. McQueen with technology.
I think I am him. All right. So let's get started. Good evening. How are you guys doing? Good, all right. That's good. That's real good. All right. So I'm here tonight to share some brief information concerning our device refresh plan. And about three years ago, y'all heard this spiel over and over, but about three years ago, we developed a device refresh plan. And the goal of that plan was to place adequate devices in the hands of our students and our staff. And we're actually in our third year of that plan. And we have truly changed the culture of expectation when it comes down to technology. Before this whole refresh plan, we had devices that we had to resurrect. We had to take a heart out of another device and place it in one device to make it work, but that is not the culture. So it has truly made our beginning of the year, our start of the year, really much smoother because we have adequate devices. And we also did not, when we talk about devices, we also, we often talk about the students, but we included staff as well. This is actually our third year of this refresh plan, and this is our third phase, which we replaced, we gave new devices to our elementary staff this year. And you would have thought that we gave them a million dollars. So with this refresh plan, this is actually has really, like I said, changed the culture and raised a lot of expectations, because we gotta keep it going. All right. Moving on to the next thing, if you look at this slide, we have broken it down by our refresh. So your pre-K through first grade, we replace those devices every four years. And those particular devices are grade-specific, so they stay in the grade level. Our second, fifth, and ninth grade, those devices are replaced annually. And we do it second, fifth, and ninth, because those students, they keep that device for four years. And we mapped it to warranty as well. And like I was just talking about, we also included our staff devices, and we are in our third year, and we finally got to the elementary level. And to maintain this refresh plan is $1.5 million. Now, remind you, we have utilized ESER funds all the way up these three years. And this year, the ESER funds is a wrap, if that is a word to say. But this is the last year that we are able to utilize the ESER funding. So as I said, there's $1.5 million to maintain it. So we need to secure a funding source to support this device refresh so that we can continue to be a competitive district in technology. So that's all I have, and we're going to turn it back over to you, Dr. Ellis.
So the last slide will show, we'll answer the two other areas, and then we'll go into transfer, the plan of transfer. I do want to thank the county commissioners for their support for these supplements, these retention bonuses. It is really helping when we recruit teachers from other counties. I wanted to discuss this today. The hard-to-fill positions, we still are offering bonuses for those hard-to-fill positions up here. You've got elementary exceptional children's program, same as middle school, then you have math and science. High school has the same areas, and bus drivers. We are still short probably about 25 bus drivers right now. Thankfully, we have about 30 getting ready to be trained, but I'll let you know when they get trained. We're still waiting for that. Anyway, we do have a plan, so it's good to have a bonus involved in that piece. The retention bonus, classified and certified, are now receiving retention bonuses for staying in the district. You must remain in the district for an entire year to receive that bonus. We started some of that two years ago and worked it into the classified positions because of the state's scale salary. That hasn't moved. An example of what a teacher would receive if they're going to a low-performing school and say teaching math or science, they would receive basically a $3,000 bonus. If they are at a low-performing school, which is under the lowest 5% in the state, they would get another $1,200, which means they would get about a $4,200 bonus to be at those schools. This has been a great way to keep quality teachers at these buildings and also to just keep them there. That's a good, that is a good amount to hire a teacher with, recruiting a bonus. And the last one is, we have a very competitive supplement for teachers and administrators. And I just want to thank the county commissioners for that. We are probably have one of the best around, probably in seven or eight counties around us. So that has definitely been a draw to keep teachers to come to Nash County because of these supplements. So thank you. So at this time, we're gonna go into, well, I guess I need to ask, do you want us to hold questions on just this one and then go to the demerger?
Yes, I think it works better.
Go ahead and go to the demerger.
No, no, I didn't ask questions.
Any questions concerning anything we just discussed? With the rest of the state, I don't know the percentage, but we are now right at probably near Johnston County's supplement, which is very good. I try not to get too close to figure out what Wake County, theirs is like a 23 or 24. But I know Wilson does like an eight, eight to nine. Green is like five to six. So in our surrounding districts, we're pretty, we're pretty high.
Do you think your plan here on school safety is completely adequate?
I think it's completely adequate, but you, you know.
Well, what I mean, I don't think anything is perfect, but.
Correct, correct.
It can minimize if something happened at the school. It might be a kid bringing a weapon to school or whatever.
So when these grants come out, they give you certain amounts of money based on ADM. And what is, what is interesting to me is when other districts are still putting security cameras, badges, and things of that nature, we are already ahead of the game. So you don't find many districts that have all this, what Mr. Ward talked about. The EVOL Systems, the security badges, cameras, elementary schools, SROs. I don't know what else we could put in a school, Mr. Ward, for safety. You know, it's always gonna be a deterrent, and we want to make sure we keep this in these buildings. But I don't know what else we really could put in, because we have done a very good job of keeping that first.
Make sure that children in school feel comfortable. They see a student with something that they shouldn't have, like maybe a weapon. It could be a knife, a pistol, or whatever. You should report it, and they don't fear reporting.
Well, as Mr. Ward talked about, we have anonymous apps now. We have SROs in buildings. But still, most students feel very comfortable going up to a teacher or administrator when it talks, when it's about school safety.
Say something app, they can do that anonymously if they don't feel comfortable.
But really, that's what I meant, feel comfortable and report whatever they see.
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify for future funding needs, SROs, elementary schools. That money is funded through a state grant, which is how much longer, two years? I believe that's what you said.
It's probably going to be two years.
Two years. So that money is gone then, as far as you know, unless they reinstate it.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a future need that we need to be aware of tonight.
Correct.
The other thing was the technology. ESER funds are gone after this year, so a future need is a million and a half a year. Okay. And the third thing is teacher supplements. I believe we're probably at least in the top 15 in the state as far as teacher supplements. We're probably 10, 11, 12, 13, and so forth in that range. And I just want to encourage everyone to stay attentive to that because we need to maintain that if at all possible, and improve it if we can, but that's very important.
Correct.
I think it certainly helps maintain the teachers that you need to maintain.
It comes up when teachers are asking, they want to know.
It's significant funding needs for the future.
Really do a follow-up over what?
Yes, sir.
About teachers, do you have that many that would be alarming that move from Nash Public Schools to another county to public schools transferring?
Do we have?
Do you have a large number of them that would bring about alarm that teachers are leaving Nash Public Schools, going to another public school?
To another school district.
Because of suffering.
The majority of our teachers that leave our buildings now are getting out of education. And they're not going to local PSUs, they're going just out of the business. That's our problem right now.
We compare well when we look at what we got from other districts versus what we lost to other districts.
Correct.
That's the number that we really should pay attention to do as well. And the last time I heard, we did real well with that.
We did.
Other questions?
Yeah, oh, academics. Are you getting the parent involved? I know some of them may not have the ability to do what needs to be done, but in some way, are you getting the parent involved with the child or children at home?
So I can ask Ms. Heather Louise to probably speak to this, but I'm going to guess on this on Heather, our latest numbers. But in our parent meetings, we keep being told about communication, communication. Every school's doing something different. Every school's got a different app. Every school's using some different software. This year, we went to one software app. It's called Thrill Share, and you can put it on your phone. I think everyone could show it around back there in our cabinet. And it basically gives all the information. Every school is centrally located. Everyone knows that that's our app now. And we have about 9,000, close to 10,000 people have downloaded that app in Nash County. So that's telling us that parents are going to that app, getting the information. And also, there's a process we call rooms where a parent can find out where their student's teacher is, so they can contact them in that app. So it's been very successful. In fact, it's higher than we've ever had it, if I'm right, Heather.
I guess you have grades from grade numbers and then the past 40 days.
So we hear that, and we're trying our best to make sure parents are notified and they understand.
Just one question, just kind of refresh me on the one-on-one refresh plan, whether the students keep the devices, take them home, and how does it really work?
Well, our students from our fifth grade, they keep their devices on every day. Some of our professors thought that if we, our second, third, our fourth grade, kind of keep our devices, that it would just minimize the risk here. We know that they're home, they're in the classroom, they're there to transport their home.
Okay, mostly, what are they, what's on the devices? Own work, I mean, I...
Yes, sir. When you think of, in this, but when you think about a device, think about like the books that you use to take off, okay? But that, the books are digital in their device, so that's how they can access their online accommodations. Do you have a problem with loss, you know, in that? Oh, that's inevitable. Anywhere you, yes, we do have some, some issues, soon as losing the device, we have a problem with that. You can, so, soon as even taken away, we have a problem with that too. So it's really inevitable for, we do not.
Okay. I guess my other question is kind of like, once you issue it to them, that they comes along with a sense of person belonging or that they should take care of it like it's their wallet.
And that's one of the reasons why we had to take it off, because being a parent, you know, just a, you know, making, making my dad do a friend, making, keeping everybody here, and so the, being a kind of my own.
All right. I think that's all, but...
Okay, so at this time, we, oh, there it is. So at this time, you're going to look at your other document, which says plan of transfer. Before we do that, I'm just going to explain a few things. First, I want to say, we've said this several times, this has never been done. They didn't write a book on it, because if they did, I would have bought it and I would have read it. But this has been a, it is a heavy lift when two districts are demerging. But I will say, if you've been to some of these meetings, it has been a very good relationship with Edgecombe Public Schools and Nash County Public Schools. We've had a, some good conversations. We're keeping students first. So when you see this plan, you know, we're focusing on students. So just want to make sure. It has just been a, it's a heavy lift, but I think both sides understand students are in the middle of this, and we want to make sure that they get the best education they can. So I'm going to first share with you this, there's an inventory list, and let me explain this. And Ms. Morris, if I murder this talk and what I'm talking about, I'll give an overview of what this list looks like before you go into the plan. So there are federal items in those schools that are being transferred to Edgecombe. And you're going to see numbers on this list of money, depreciation costs, because when federal items are purchased, we can't just give those items away. So what we did is we had an auditor to go into these buildings and find the federal merchandise in those buildings that are five-year, five years or less. All the other ones fine. State and local items, they keep, okay? But the federal piece is a little different. So what you're going to see is, is a list of all the federal items in those schools that Edgecombe will have to either purchase or we take those items. Now, we're thinking they're going to want to purchase, that has been our conversation. But when you see this list, you're going to see a cost associated when we bought it. The federal government then has a expectancy, life expectancy, then they do a depreciation cost. So then you're going to see a cost factor to each one of them items, and you can see it itemized all the way down. In the transfer plan, you're going to see the figures, but this is going to show you what the items are, okay? So at this time, I don't know how to move, okay? If you want to move it up just a little, just real quick, Mr. Ward is going to come up here and explain most of this. He's going to do an overview. If you have any questions, we've got our group over here to answer. But just letting you know, we meet next week with Edgecombe Commissioners and the Edgecombe School System to go over this plan again or to discuss this plan. November 15th, am I right, Heather, November 15th, we turn both plans into DPI. DPI has our plan right now. We sent ours with our lawyers, I think it was on the Thursday of last week, once the board saw our plan. So November 15th will be the day we turn all this in with signatures to DPI. So, so Mr. Ward, at this time, can you come up and give an overview and?
Hello again, I'm back. I drew the short straw. You should have this packet before you, and as Dr. Ellis said, I will just give you a brief overview of our plan, starting on page one, of course. It just outlines with the table of contents through page one and two. Page three provides you with a pretty much an executive summary, putting the districts in historical context in terms of their existence, their coexistence, and now the demerger or the plan of transfer or the transfer to Edgecombe County of our students and assets. Also, the plan outlines in detail the core responsibilities and also the duties of our department heads, as well, it gives you a detailed plan of action for records, safety, security, transportation, technology, so forth. Page four is just a forward to statements. As I mentioned earlier, page five is just the core responsibilities of each of the department heads, starting with the superintendent. I will say that these duties and responsibilities are not exhaustive or limited to this particular script because we do a lot of planning, and there's a lot of overlap with our department heads meeting together to discuss this plan. On page seven, just lists the team members of our transfer process, in addition to subcommittees that are within the plan as well. And that goes on to page eight. On page eight, we'll list, of course, our Nash County Board of Commissioners and our Nash County Board of Education members by district as well. On page nine, as Dr. Ellis said, this is just some enrollment numbers currently as of 321, but this is going to be updated just prior to us submitting the plan on the 15th to give more accurate numbers in terms of the students that's in our district by all configurations, elementary, middle, and high school. And in the far right-hand corner, you will see the impact that it would have post-emerger of the students. This is, again, just an estimation or guesstimation of what we will have post-emerger. The bottom number there is 12,928 students approximately. On page 10, just by configuration of all the four schools, give you the current number of staff members that are housed there as a total. Also included in that is the Teacher Resource Center, which is located beside Fayetteville Elementary School. On page 11 provides the fiscal impact, impact, I'm sorry. If you see for the state funding, there are none, but local funding, of course, the 25 million, of course, minus what revert to Edgecombe County, the $2 million for the local and for the federal, that number's 3.4 million dollars that will revert to Edgecombe County Page 12 is just giving you a total number of positions that's in our district as of 22, 23 school year. For example, the O1 position or the PRC 001, those are our classroom teachers, and those are 705 positions that were allocated to us by the state in terms of positions. And as you can see, as you go down by the PRC code, what those positions or dollar amount or positions will incur. Excuse me. Page 13, again, just providing more detail, is broken down by certified and classified staff members, part-time and full-time, in those four schools. And that's as of, again, that's at the beginning of the year. Again, we're going to change these numbers as we get closer to the submission date of November 15th. As Dr. Ellis alluded to earlier, on page 14, you will see the total number of assets by school, by PRC code, of federal dollars that was, that are being currently used in our schools. And those descriptors are at the bottom by PRC, so that would give you an idea of where the money is coming from. For instance, 50, those are Title I funds, which are all federal fund, these are all federal funds, all these PRC codes that you see before you. Also, to the right of that, you will see the life expectancy of the assets that you have before you. That's anything, like you said, anything over five years, we don't worry about, but those assets are listed by the number of years to give us the depreciated value. At the bottom of this, there will be a link, as Dr. Ellis said, for the federal equipment, furniture, technology, and inventory list. There will be a link, there is a link there, electronic link to give you access to that. So that will be the same information that you have there before you in the spreadsheet. Community engagement, that has been an ongoing process from day one in terms of keeping our stakeholders well informed about this process, to make sure that we are giving full transparency to this process. So we did launch a communication plan through our communications director, Ms. Heather Finch, through student family engagement, and also engagement with internal stakeholders as On page 16, it talks about the student transition process. This involves, this is very lengthy because it's going to involve the records of all the students, IEP folders, regular folders, 504 plans, any type of plan that a student may have, AIG students, all of that. In terms of this, outlines how that information will be transferred or handled going to Edgecombe County Public Schools. On page 17, you will see, starting in July, we begin to talk about a timeline for transfers. This would be more detailed, once the plan is submitted and approved, then we can begin to talk more specifically to our families about options they may have in regards to those pre-K nine students that are going to Edgecombe County, and then those ninth-grade students that are also going to Edgecombe County Schools, and those 10 through 13 students that may opt to stay, opt in to stay in Nash County Public Schools. And also, after that, we will have our plan coming forward with those 400 students that are currently in Edgecombe County Schools that live in Nash County, we will start working on that plan after that. And you may hear more from Dr. Ellis regarding that. And so our transfer process, again, is starting pretty much in November, December, in terms of looking at options for students and answering questions and getting that out to the public. As you can see, this transfer process will take us well into 2024, April of 2024. We will be getting information out to the parents in terms of surveys and also forms for them to opt in, whether they want to stay or let us know what they decide to do in regards to this transfer process. And so this is pretty much spelled out in detail in terms of how we plan to launch this. I've spoken about student records on page 19 now. Thank you, Tremaine. Safety and security, I alluded to that earlier in terms of the cameras and any other equipment that's in the buildings that will remain, because most of the cameras and equipment that are in those buildings for schools, they were paid for with local and state funds, with the exception of one EVOL system at Parker Middle School, that was purchased with federal funds, so that is on the federal asset inventory list for purchase. Transportation, our Director of Transportation is in constant communication with their director in regards to the number of buses that we will transfer over to Edgecombe County Schools. There are some challenges with that in terms of the number of buses or the type of buses because what we call a 66-passenger bus, that's the only type of bus they can accommodate at this time. We currently use 72-passenger buses, and their garage can only accommodate the 66-passenger. So there's conversations about how this is going to work with Mr. Byer. So that timeline is in place in terms of getting more direction from DPI, in terms of the number of buses that will be transferred over. And that number, too, can also be based on the number of ADM students that are also transferring over to Edgecombe County. Our Technology Department, Mr. McQueen, he's alluded to earlier in terms of what he has done or is doing. All of his department, they've, again, given you a breakdown of federal assets that's in that plan, the spreadsheet, in terms of the equipment. As you can see here, that will consist of copy machines, Cisco, Marica Network, Leichinger's, the Vision, Hike Vision, which are the camera security systems that are in the buildings as well. And page 23 just give you a breakdown of cost again, in terms of student devices, staff devices. And page twenty-three just give you a breakdown of cost, again, um, in terms of student devices, staff devices, cameras, scanners, projectors, interactive boards, uh, printers, uh, televisions that are in the schools. And, um, um, those numbers there, those numbers represent the total cost per school. And page twenty-four, of course, just brings us to the conclusion of this plan. Also, at the end of this plan, you will find an appendix, which, again, you do have a hard copy of that that will also be included in the hard copy that we will submit to DPI. Shall I wait for questions?
Any questions from Commissioners on the proposed plan?
Still, there's a lot of work to be done before, uh, July next year. And, uh, we need to move on.
Other questions, comments? Will y'all pass on? Dr. Ellis, if I could say a couple of things, uh, having been in those meetings, and you pointed out very well that they have gone extremely well, uh, which I think surprised some of us, uh, how the four boards have worked together or representatives of them. And really, the only thing that is left to resolve is this, uh, equipment list that was purchased with federal funds. Unfortunately, the statute that came from the state that created all this did not address that. I don't think they anticipated that. And what it says in the statute is that everything in the schools will be left in the schools. But then we did, uh, realize well into the process that the federal things that were purchased or paid for with federal funds have a clause that says it can't be left. So we just haven't resolved how we gonna settle that nine hundred something thousand dollars there. Uh, Edgecombe, of course, feels like they want to go by statute, and I understand why they would, because that's what the statute says. And, uh, is there any update? I know they went to see DPI recently. Did we get any things from that that we wanted to say tonight? Or is it still up in the air like it was at all last meeting?
The only update was, the federal piece is still that it's depreciated value based on what the federal government applies to depreciation costs. Um, I believe Edgecombe brought up something about a fair market value instead of a depreciated value. And I think we were concerned, and if that was the case, if we were to get audited, especially through ESRA funding, which is billions of dollars, they would ask, so why was this TV sold for four hundred dollars and on the depreciated list it says eight hundred? So there's a, that would be a rub for us, because when it's gone, we have to account for. So that's been the issue we're facing. I don't know what a fair market value of a desk would be. So a lot of those items you see are desks, computers, um, TVs, so it's, it's just a plethora of stuff. I don't know how you would do a fair market value. The way the feds do it is a pretty good system of depreciation, years, cost, bam, it's done. So that's what we wanna do.
So we, when you hear that talk, that's what's going on. It's trying to resolve what the statute didn't cover, more or less. Uh, and we are a ways apart on that, uh, like this moment, but I'm sure we'll resolve that because we have basically everything else. And the other thing that we've heard several times was that Nash would be giving Edgecombe all the old buses, and, and that's not true. As they stated, uh, but to clear it up just a little bit, they have a garage over there that can only accommodate a certain length bus. Therefore, they have to take the sixty-six buses to be able to put them in their garage. Unfortunately, it is true that the, most of the sixty-six buses will be our oldest buses. But indeed, if we do it that way, it's because of the garage, not because we're going through handpicking and giving them the worst. And I think we cleared it up pretty well about last meeting.
And I think there's some other school systems that are using some of those buses, and there's a trading system that DPI will allow you to do with other counties not using buses, which would be a new bus.
Very definitely. Close, I thought I heard you say the clause, it's something that you wanted to do, but clause, so you can't do it.
Talking about, are you talking about buses or are you talking about equipment?
No, I'm not talking about the buses. How that you made earlier.
Uh, what, what I said was that the statute, when written, how this process would work, didn't anticipate that there was some equipment that we couldn't leave in the schools at no cost because it was bought with federal funds. That's why we have that to work through right on. It was caused by not being covered in the statute, not by anybody working on the process.
But that can be worked out?
It, it, it can be.
Two ways.
Okay.
Federal and, uh, state, they, they got involved in any other way. Certain can get involved in.
Yeah, well, I think.
And have themselves that.
Yeah, well, I think it's a federal fund, so it would have to be a federal.
Well, that's what I was saying, federal.
Yeah.
What federal do in the state? I said, they shouldn't be telling you that we can't do it, it's gonna stay as is. They got involved in other ways in the system, so they.
Get involved in that as well.
Say what?
I said, so get them involved in that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood?
They, they need to.
Yeah.
Over this, I don't, I didn't agree with them all, that they need.
I'm just trying to hit those points that you may hear out in public. It's been an issue and why they are an issue. It's not caused by the working group, it's caused by legal things that we're having to work through. You agree, man?
I do.
So the last comment, Mr. Ward talked about a second plan. Just remember, when this plan is submitted, then Nash County Public Schools begins to talk about the redistrict piece for us, because there are about four hundred and fifty kids that'll be displaced, because they won't have a school, they live on the Nash side. So our second plan would be, we're in conversations with NC State about where these students could go to school. So there'll be another plan possibly when we meet. March or May, we do our budget presentation where we'll share that information.
Could you touch, we touched on it, but didn't, uh, get into the details. Just go through in a little more detail how it works for those tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades that will be remaining possibly at senior high, so that'll be a three-year process to complete everything.
So the original plan was tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades would be grandfathered legacy then, which means they would stay in, basically, Rocky Mountain High School. There's a few on the fringe of, I guess, National High School, just a few. And those students would be, they would be able to just stay there. Then the conversation came around, well, how about if a kid was in, you could actually have an eighth grader who's in Edgecombe County and their brother goes to Rocky Mountain High School with Nash County. So we want to go ahead and just make sure those students who won't stay opt in to stay. We think the majority will, we just wanna have a record of those kids that are opt in to stay. Then the ninth grade, well, no, excuse me, then the tenth grade, eleventh and twelfth, so after three years, those students will have matriculated through, and it'll be just Nash County students. That's why we're gonna do pretty much an early transfer opt-in process, just to find out the numbers, because we're gonna need to know how many students are staying for our state allocations for teachers in those buildings.
There probably will be some redistricting at the high school level to equalize the numbers in those schools that you gonna lose.
And that's our next, we're gonna have to talk about the high schools.
Right. Other questions from Commissioners? I think it would be easier to get them asked tonight than it would next week with double the number of people present. So anything you can think of, we'd sure like to clear it up for both boards tonight.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Great.
Not really, but I will say a few words. Right, well, we're on item number six on the agenda that this school, uh, personnel prepared for us tonight is Nash County Commissioner update. I really don't have anything specific, uh, any board member have anything they'd like to say, uh, as relate to the school system? Any, any updates that you'd like to or anything you have on your mind whatsoever? And I will close it out after that.
I, I just don't want you to think when I'm sitting here, not concerned about this whole process.
Well, I, I am a little bit.
Well, you don't have to be concerned about me, because I've been to meetings and I've heard a lot of this, so I'm pretty much familiar with what was said here tonight.
Great. And that may be the case with all of you.
It may be, I don't know.
I've just been nervous the whole time, because it seemed like it has gone extremely well to the point that, uh, I, I hope it goes right on over the goal line, just like it's working. And next Monday night will be, uh, a, a good night, once we get through that with all four boards, I think.
I heard the lady say over at, uh, Berdys move over there. Talking about these federal assets, she said, we're gonna do what's the right thing for the children.
Right.
So whatever that ends up being, I know that's what we're gonna do.
Exactly. Okay. Well, I've heard that in every meeting about ten times, so, and all the public meetings as well, so I believe everybody has certainly bought into that. But I'll just say, on behalf of our board, uh, we greatly appreciate the working relationship that we've had. We're not quite through, but it has been very pleasurable, I think, uh, and as Dr. Ellis says, we're doing something that has never been done and didn't have a roadmap to look at, but, uh, maybe we can pass our roadmap along to someone else if they ever have to go through. All I have to say.
Alright.
Bye, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, um, on behalf of the Board of Education, we echo those sentiments and wanna say thank you to our county commissioners, and we're looking forward to, uh, progressing forward. Um, if there's no further business to come before the Board of Education, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Board Member E. Bullock for the record, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
And we had a, uh, need for a closed session after this meeting to tend to a matter of attorney-client privilege, so we have another room that you're gonna move to, uh, for just a very few minutes, and then we will come back out here to recess at the end of that. And we won't, what we'll be doing is recessing our board commissioners meeting until next Monday night, uh, the sixteenth at seven o'clock, which will be at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. So, uh, I, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session at this time. Have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Wilkins, seconded by Commissioner Outlaw. Questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, by a light sign. Motion carries, and it could take about a ten-minute recess, and then we will reconvene in the room. Call us back into regular session. Uh, there was discussion about personnel in closed session, uh, there's no action to be taken at this time about that matter. Uh, therefore, I would entertain a motion to recess the board of commissioners meeting until Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. And I understand we will probably be located in the main, uh, room there at the bottom level of the event center. Entertain, uh, motion at this time.
We recess, uh, this meeting until October the sixteenth, where we'll be at the Event Center at seven o'clock.
Have a motion there seconded.
Other boards, Edgecombe and Nash.
At that meeting. Okay, seconded by Commissioner Wilkins, questions on that motion? It will be four boards meeting, both county board commissioners and both county school boards. Uh, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by a light sign. Stand and recess. Thank y'all.